I'll call a meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order and ask the clerk to call her all.
Director, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kildee?
Here.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Here.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moschee?
Present.
Mayor Craven?
Here. We're meeting at 4:30 because we have a closed session that was announced. Could I ask the city attorney to please announce the circumstances under which we will be meeting in closed session?
Yes, there's two closed sessions. One is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. That would be initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. Number of potential cases is one. The other is a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. That is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The name of the case is OPV Coalition versus Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, and that's been filed in the Ventura County Superior Court, and the case number is in the agenda.
Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak to us on these items? Seeing no one come forward, we will recess into closed session and be back at 5:00 PM for regular business.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Camarillo Library Board to order. Let the record reflect that all trustees are present. And Mr. Kildee, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anybody that wishes to address the library board? Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move the approval.
A motion and a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Moving on, do we have comments from staff?
Yes, Madam President, we do have the library director, Mandy Nazar, in the audience, who will be presenting the updates for what's going on at the library.
Thank you. So, the big update is One City, One Book is a nationwide community reading program to inspire community conversations and has been popular with the Camarillo Library patrons since 2012. And I'm very excited to announce that Camarillo Library will be participating in this program again. The One City, One Book program will be an in-person event on Saturday, September 25th, at 1:00 PM in our library community room. This year's book selection is titled "The Rose Code", which was written by bestselling author and Southern California native Kate Quinn. So, we have plenty of copies in our library for patrons to check out and read from now until September 25th. And we hope that they, and we hope that you, will join us in the real live author discussion in our library. In other library-related news, we are ecstatic to welcome back in-person programming and to see patrons engage again in a community setting. So, earlier this month, we reinstated weekly preschool storytimes and crafts for kids. We also offer creative and engaging programs for teens and adults. And we'll be continuing to add more programming in the days to come. To reserve your spot for an in-person program, we ask that you visit our library website or stop at a library service desk and a staff member will be able to help you. So, thank you all for your support, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Questions? Oh, sorry. Questions? Thank you. I have my, the copy of the book, and I'm going to Carpinteria next week, so it's perfect timing. Thank you. Okay. Moving along, do we have any comments from trustees? Okay, with that, we will adjourn until our next meeting.
All right, we'll call this meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District Regular Board meeting of Wednesday, July 28, 2021, to order. Let the record reflect that all directors are present. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. We'll move to consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move the consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that's adopted on a 5-0 vote. Are there any comments from staff? Any comments from directors? Mrs. Craven?
I won't ask who's going, because I know a lot of people wouldn't want people to know when their house is empty. But I hope to see you, a lot of you, at the CASA Conference on August 11th through the 13th in San Diego.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the Sanitary District.
I'll call a meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order. Ask the record to reflect that all council members are present and ask if there are any amendments to the agenda.
No amendments.
I would like to ask that we pull Consent Item F and put it on immediately after presentations. After the consent calendar, I'm sorry. And with that, it is time for a presentation. So, could I ask Lori Wilbord to please come up? Hi. Is this on? Yes. Okay. I don't usually do this, but I'm going to read, because you have done so many things. I'm going to read what somebody wrote. Oh, well, maybe they're good, maybe they're not. Okay, they'll support you out there. You have a big fan club. Lori's a long-term employee, 23 and 1/2 years of service with the City of Camarillo. Only 16 current employees have more tenure than Lori, meaning that she has more institutional knowledge than 88% of our employees. Lori started her career with the city in 1997 as an account clerk, 1, in the finance department. After two years, she was promoted to account clerk, 2. A year later, she became an administrative specialist in the community, 1, in the community development department. And a year later, she was promoted to code enforcement officer. That was in 2001. In 2008, that job title was changed to code compliance officer. In March of 2020, Lori was promoted to the newly created senior code compliance officer position. Working in the code compliance division, Lori has helped the community and touched many lives. She has handled weeds, graffiti, homeless issues, hoarding cases, child and elderly endangerment, and human trafficking. And let's not forget COVID. Lori was the city's main point of contact on all things COVID. She helped the planners while allowing outdoor dining and banners. She helped businesses reopen while meeting the county and state guidelines. And she kept city staff informed on the ever-changing COVID regulations. Somebody else is going to do your job, Lori, but they'll never be able to fill your shoes. And I want to tell a little personal story. Lori's always there when somebody calls and says, "There's a problem here." And she'll, I personally have reported many of these to her department head, Joe, and he passes them along and says, "Lori will take care of this." So, one day, she was down doing something, and she happened to be on Ramire Street at the same time my husband was. So, he is leaving, wherever he's leaving, and apparently she was following. But he saw just a little toddler out on the street, no shoes, and so he stopped automatically, thinking he'd do something. And Lori zipped right up behind him and went in, and he said, "You got this?" And she said, "I got it." So, I always had a feeling she was going to take care of everybody, young and old. And I see your department head over here. I think he'd like to come up and have a few words, too.
On behalf of all the city staff, Lori, we just want to thank you so much, not only for your years of excellent service and dedication, but really mostly for being so kind and generous and loving with all of us. We're definitely going to miss you, but we're very excited for your new adventure, and we're very grateful to have had the opportunity to work together. And thank you for all the great things you've done with us.
And one other thing I want to say. Lori was very, very concerned about getting people into compliance, much more interested than collecting fines. And I think that's what everybody in the city wants, is compliance, and that's what you're all about. So, I'm going to present this plaque. Joe, stay up here for the picture. This plaque is a tile, a city tile, and only certain retirees who've been with the city for 10 years get it, and when city council members leave. So, very few people have these tiles.
Did I get two, because I've been over 20?
No. I only know of two people who've gotten two, who came and went and came and went. Anyway.
Thank you so much.
Oh, we want Lori to have a little.
Lori's not good at talking. It's kind of talking. I can talk to everybody else. I can talk to the citizens and stuff, but I'm very humbled. Thank you all for this. I couldn't have done my job without my many support from every department. There's not a time, today I called to get a hold of Mark last minute, and I don't think PD's ever seen a letter come out so quick. So, if it wasn't for the rest of the staff and people who are willing to put up with my crap, we couldn't do what we're doing. So, I really appreciate this.
Thank you, Lori.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Would you mind if I just said one?
Not at all, Mr. Kildee.
Yeah. Lori and I go way back. I believe, Lori, I was elected just about the same time that you took on this position. And I think the mayor eloquently stated what this job is all about, but I just want to say, it is one of the most challenging positions in our city. If not the most challenging position at times. And Lori dealt with that. I don't know how you did it, Lori. I don't know how you would come home and be able to sleep at night with some of the issues that she's had to deal with. Yeah. Well, I can relate, but he looks great. But you have always been extremely professional. You've always been available. I like what the mayor said, that you're really into compliance and not necessarily fines. You epitomized what an employee of the City of Camarillo can be. And I want to thank your family for sharing Lori with you for all these years. You are a genuine pleasure, and I mean a pleasure to have as an employee of our city. And I wish you nothing but success in your future endeavors, whatever that may be. And good luck to you, Lori. I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you a lot. But I'm also extremely happy for you and your friends and your family. And I've been through a lot of retirements in my tenure in this city. And the fact that so many of our employees are here to support you on this, I think, speaks volumes of what we are in this city and how we treat each other. So, good luck, Lori. Again, I'm just so happy for you and your family.
Anybody else? Mr. Tremblay?
So, Lori, I haven't been around as long as Kevin, only about five years, five years now. But I simply want to say that whenever your name has come up in conversation in the community and the input that I get back, they equate it with one word, and that is professionalism. So, I want to thank you so much for your professionalism and your kindness and approaching what you've done, and I wish you the very, very best of luck. Thank you. You set a very high bar.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, we are now at the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll move the approval, I believe, less Item F on the consent.
Motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. That gets us to Item F, which is a contract with Pegasus Studios for video production services. So, let me tell you the problem I have, and then if there's any other council members who would like to discuss it, we can discuss, or we can have a motion, or we can ask staff for comments, however you want to do it. My problem with this contract is on page F3, Scope of Services. And I've talked to staff about this a few times this week. Under Exhibit A, C is State of the City, provide a 15-minute State of the City video each fiscal year. And so, my problem is the 15-minute State of the City, not the fact that there's going to be a video produced. My problem is that the mayors have, with staff's help, come up with a State of the City. I do not ever remember a 15-minute one. I believe that mine at 20 minutes, and I try to hold them to 20 minutes, are on the short end. The mayors usually give what they consider a good standing of the city in terms of finances, safety, library, new construction, public works, recent accomplishments, and new plans that the city has, and anything else that the mayor that year thinks is important. And as I've explained, I think that limiting what's going to go on TV is for two 15 minutes is not what's ever happened before. Usually, going back, what's happened is the city, the mayor makes the presentation at a luncheon that the chamber has, or, yeah. And that was videotaped, and then it was run on our TV. There were three years when the city manager didn't really like that process because of dishes clanging and the question-and-answer term might run long. And so, those, in addition to the luncheon, there was a separate State of the City, same words, same graphics, but that was made here at City Hall in the mayor's chair, and it was videotaped, or taped, should I say, however it's done, in our same method that we do now for council meetings, and it was rerun. But none of those came to 15 minutes. So, I've talked to staff about this, and they have a different idea of State of the City. And all I want is to either extend this C to 20, 30 minutes, or take a time limit out, or if it's going to be something other than the State of the City speech, call the C something else. So, maybe staff would like to respond to my concerns.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to respond to your questions. So, with the intent of this new agreement, we were really trying to increase the menu of options that would be available under our contract for video services. So, we wanted to achieve maximum flexibility in our approach to filming, which is why we outline the different possibilities that you see in Exhibit A, the Scope of Services. We intentionally included some specific videos, the short videos that are noted in Item B and the State of the City video outlined in Item C, in order to get a better understanding of the cost of what those videos would take to produce, and then therefore be able to budget and plan accordingly. So, we added the production of a 15-minute State of the City video each fiscal year, pretty much as a placeholder. And the idea is that that would be a pre-recorded video, similar to what we did in 2020, and that is one option. Another option would be to utilize Item D, which is production of other city events and activities. And so, we have we have sought an hourly rate for filming, photography, and post-production, and the idea being that if the state of the city or another city event or activity just required filming and post-production, we could use that as an option.
Mr. Kildee?
I understand all that. However, comma, if we're talking about replaying the state of the city, it's going to have to be a lot longer than 15 minutes. Is that part of the contract? I mean, in other words, do we have the flexibility enough, if you want to replay that in its totality, that there's a strong, you know, premise that pretty much it's going to be longer than 15 minutes?
We do, and that was the idea with the option C and option D. So option C would be a pre-recorded video, the idea being the maximum length of time would be 15 minutes. D is filming of any city events with no time limit. And so that would be an hourly rate for filming and then for editing and post-production. And either one of those would be able to run on our government channel.
So this is in addition to, not in lieu of, then?
That was the intent of the scope of services, yes, is to allow for a menu of options and provide that flexibility.
So let me just say that I got the explanation today, and we all have that explanation. So everybody in the room understands what this means. But this is a contract that's, what, a three-year contract? And then if it's renewed, usually things just stay the same. The only thing that changes is the price. So during all of that time, people change. We know what the words would mean now. People later only know what's on paper, and on paper it doesn't say D, including, I just have a problem with the 15-minute state of the city, the way it's stated.
Madam Mayor, we would take your suggestion. You gave us some options there, that we would eliminate the duration of the video, so we would strike out that 15-minute, and we believe the vendor would agree to that. And that would give us the flexibility with you or with any other sitting mayor, depending on what it would be. It gives us that flexibility. So we'd be happy to change that and eliminate the timeframe, the duration.
I'm happy. Sean?
So as I understand, I mean, dictating 15 minutes is one to understand, to assign a cost to it, because understanding video production, every minute has its respective cost, the amount to film, the amount to edit. Obviously, they can't give you any real significant or concrete quote without knowing what the duration of what they're filming is going to be. Second, I, maybe it's generational. 15-minute to me seems like an eternity sometimes. I mean, I agree with Charlotte's saying. I know that the state of the city traditionally does run a lot longer, the way it's delivered, say, at a luncheon. There you have a captive audience, and here we're playing to a completely different audience, and that's more the general public who's watching something on YouTube. And they're going to have a much more, shorter attention span, i.e., you know, when I'm surfing the web and watching videos or whatnot, you know, it's got a very, very short time to catch my attention and keep it. And I won't watch a 30-minute state of the city as it's normally delivered in a luncheon, but using certain production values and whatnot. If you make it enticing, then we can make a 15 or even, you know, yeah, 15-minute video, still cover, you know, there's some brevity in there, you know, but cover all the major significant points while educating the public and that respective audience, which is going to differ from, you know, a captive one in a luncheon. You know, they're paying to be there, and they're happy to sit there for an hour and a half. But, so I mean, I-
We've never had one that lasted an hour and a half.
Well, the whole program lasts almost an hour and a half. I mean, the state of the city maybe lasts 30 minutes, you know, the presentation. But I understood the 15-minute. And, yeah, maybe to clarify, that is a pre-recorded. That isn't the, necessarily the state of the city as we traditionally know it via the luncheon, but something, yeah, similar to what was recorded last year during COVID.
Yeah, somebody, eliminating that duration, that 15-minute duration, that we'd work with each mayor then to determine what the state of the city would be for that year. So that would give us that flexibility. So the intent would continue, whether it be a pre-recorded, as you were describing, or if it's a segment of the luncheon, at least we would have that flexibility. So, and we can, we will still have that, and eliminating that duration from the agreement.
Any other comments? Okay, so is there a motion?
Oh, move item F with, I guess, those amendments?
With the change of eliminating the two words, 15 and minute, from item C in the scope of services. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Discussion items, A, city monument signs, additional lettering, and refurbishment. Could we have a staff report, please? Did I miss something?
I believe we want to do the special meeting and do the Cloud Nine item.
I've got too many agendas here. Okay. We need to open the special meeting. Yeah, I just have too many, two or too many agendas to follow. I'm sorry. I'm opening the special meeting at this time. Is that right?
And then I can take it from here.
Okay, please do.
Can we have the PowerPoint? Thank you. So the item that's, the subject of our special meeting is an agreement regarding the Cloud Nine hangar development project at the Camrio Airport. Next slide, please. The basic terms for this agreement include the issuance of an encroachment permit by the city for the Cloud Nine hangar development project, and then also a dedication of an easement to the city by the county for the future widening of Las Posas Road from four lanes to six lanes adjacent to the project. The eventual goal of the city being to expand some six lanes all the way from Ventura Boulevard to Pleasant Valley Road. And the agreement does indicate that the county is prepared to cooperate with the city in regards to additional dedications that would be necessary to accomplish that purpose. Next slide, please. Before I get into details about what the agreement is, I want to make clear what the agreement is not. And we start with the 1976 Agreement. As everyone knows, that's an agreement that was entered into between the city and the county in 1976 with respect to the operations at the airport, certain limitations with regard to those operations. And I want to make clear that the agreement that's before you tonight is not related in any way to the 1976 Agreement between the city and the county, and further, that this agreement does not modify in any way the restrictions on airport operations that are contained in that 1976 Agreement. I will add that the city intends to continue discussions with the county about the terms of that 1976 Agreement in order to fully protect the interests of Camrio residents in regard to the operations at the Camrio Airport. Next slide, please. I also want to point out another thing that this agreement is not, and it is not related to the updating of the Camrio Airport master plan. The city intends to engage with the County Department of Airports in regard to the updating of the Camrio master, airport master plan, for the purpose of keeping the Camrio Airport from becoming a commercial airport. Next slide. What this slide illustrates is the location of Las Posas Road between Ventura Boulevard on the north and Pleasant Valley Boulevard on the south. The Cloud Nine project is going to be illustrated in the next slide in terms of its location. But let me make a few comments before we go to that slide about the widening of Las Posas Road, and this detail is found in your agenda report for the council and for the public to review. I can say that the city has been planning for many, many years to widen Las Posas Road from Ventura Boulevard down to Pleasant Valley Road, from four lanes, from the current four lanes to six lanes. That would be due to increasing traffic as well as for public safety purposes. We know that Las Posas Road provides access to and from the Camrio Airport, as well as access to Port of Wayneemi and the naval base. The widening of Las Posas Road, I should add, is consistent with the city's capital improvement plan, as well as the Ventura County General Plan, which designates the road as a major connector road within the county-wide transportation system to provide for the safe movement of people. It is also consistent with the city of Camrio circulation element of the general plan. I should mention that there has not been a firm date set yet for the construction of the widening itself. There have been plans for many years and preparations for that widening. I can give a couple of examples. One example, and then we can go to the next slide now. In November of 2000, there was a dedication to the city by the county adjacent to the, what was then being constructed as a fire station, approximately 20 feet wide and about 300 feet long. So that is an example of a dedication that was done some 21 years ago in anticipation once more of the widening of Las Posas Road. We also know that in November of 2018, the city council authorized an amendment to an agreement with the Zimmerman Engineering Firm to prepare the conceptual design services for Las Posas widening to six lanes. The slide that's before you illustrates the location of Cloud Nine, which is on the top left in the blue text. The dedication that would be part of this current agreement would be that solid blue line that's adjacent to the Cloud Nine project. However, the county has indicated a willingness to participate in discussions with the city with respect to the need for additional right-of-way. That's in recital H of the agreement at page six of your packet, where it says that the county recognizes the city's desire to acquire additional right-of-way along Las Posas Road, and that the county is committed to working with the city to secure consent from the FAA for easement deeds for such additional right-of-way. So the current agreement is for that location where I just identified, next to Cloud Nine, but there is a commitment to continue to work between the city and the county so that eventually the city would be able to obtain the right-of-way necessary for the widening of Las Posas Road, all the way from Ventura Boulevard to Pleasant Valley Road. Can I have the next slide, please? So under the agreement, the city requirements for the Cloud Nine project are set forth in section two of the agreement. That's on page eight of your packet, under the heading of Processing of City Requirements. And it makes specific reference to a complete package, which is not yet complete, that would be presented by Cloud Nine, and that would have to come back to the council for approval at a future meeting. With respect to the actions to be taken by the city upon approval of the complete package would be the issuance of an encroachment permit to Cloud Nine for the deceleration lane and the entrance from Las Posas Road, a sewer permit, and will serve letters for water and sewer. Next slide, please. This has to do with the easement deed that I've mentioned in my earlier comments. This is set forth in section three of the agreement on page nine of your packet, and it goes through, and I'm not going to read all of the information that's in the agreement, but I can say in summary that this would be a process for the execution of an easement deed by the county to the city for the widening of Las Posas Road, including the application to the FAA and submitting a legal description and an appraisal for the parcel to be conveyed. Can I have the next slide, please? So I should mention that just yesterday, the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to approve the agreement. It was on the agenda for their meeting, and they approved it unanimously. And next slide. So the suggested action for tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement regarding the Cloud Nine hangar development project at the Camrio Airport, and to approve non-substantive changes to the agreement subject to approval by the city attorney. Next slide. And this is a clip art that I happened to find when I was putting together the PowerPoint. I thought it was appropriate to have a road sign since we're talking about a road with Las Posas Road.
I have any questions?
So I'm available to answer questions.
Yeah, okay. Brian, in your humble opinion as an attorney, is there anything that's not in this agreement that you feel should be, or are you satisfied with what this agreement entails?
I believe the agreement is complete. I think it's especially important that, as I mentioned in my comments, that the county had, has indicated, as noted in recital H, that they will work with the city with respect to future dedications. So this agreement does, as I mentioned, reference the widening adjacent to the Cloud Nine project, but the fact that the county was prepared to commit to working with the city for additional widening, I think is helpful. So my answer to your question is, I do not believe there's anything that should be in the agreement that's not there.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
Do we want to hear from the public, maybe?
I'm sorry, yes. Is there anybody in the, excuse me, is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak to us on this issue? Seeing no one come forward, I'll now open it up to the council for a motion.
I'll make-
I'll move the suggestive action.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'm sorry, you have a second?
I'll second it, but I'd like to make a comment.
Susan made the motion. Kevin seconded.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, I think it's important, and I don't want to belabor this point, but this in any way, shape, or form does not deal with the 1976 Agreement at all. It's mutually exclusive. And also, item H, how important that was. And also, that with the traffic on this particular roadway, that this was needed with or without the Cloud Nine. And I don't want to get into the nuances of the Cloud Nine Agreement because it was approved by the county. I would have a whole lot more to say about that, but I think it's also important that the county does run the airport and visa what we deal with as council members. So I just wanted to put that on the record and make a comment.
Any other comments? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now I'll try to get back to this other. Now we will go to the regular meeting. I gotta get back to this other one. City monument signs, additional lettering, and refurbishment. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. This item is to consider adding "Welcome to the," or "the," "Welcome to the," lettering to the city's five monument signs and refurbishment of two of those signs. This item was requested by council towards the end of last year, and requested by council members, and it was referred to the then Streets and Transportation Committee, which now is the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, which has met twice to consider this, once on May 5, 2021, and June 2, 2021. The initial request was to consider adding the lettering, "Welcome to the." So staff presented the information with some mockups of what that would potentially look like, first an overview of the locations of the five signs. The first one in order is in the staff report, along the 101 freeway northbound, and it's near Commune Ruiz. And then at the Lewis Road off-ramps, which exit to Daly on northbound 101, a monument sign there. That's the newest one that's been constructed. And then there's one relatively newer one down at Lewis Road in Pleasant Valley, the northwest corner. And then two concrete, smooth concrete signs, one at the southwest corner of Lewis- And then two concrete, smooth concrete signs, one at the southwest corner of Lewis and Las Poses, and another one on Santa Rosa Road as your crossing city limit on the westbound approach on Santa Rosa Road. So five city monument signs that we're talking about tonight. First one being that along the northbound 101, and it's a aerial, or a depiction of where that is, location, and then a close-up. And what we have is some renderings with what it would look like with the "Welcome to the" lettering added to the existing sign. So that's what's shown here. And then this is one of the signs that's recommended for refurbishment. It needs, and what we propose is a smooth stucco coat, basically to match the smoothness and the color of the newest one that was on Daly Drive at the Lewis Road off-ramps. So refurbishment would be smooth stucco, and also replacing the brick with a concrete style cap to match that one also, that's it, on Daly Drive. This is that location, the newest sign there, along Daly Drive at the northbound Lewis Road off-ramps. And again, a mockup showing what "Welcome to the" would look like to add to the existing sign, the existing signage. And here you can see the concrete style cap work on the sign is what would be proposed to replace the brick at that other one on the 101 at Commune Ruiz. Third location down at Lewis Road and Pleasant Valley Road. Wanted to show this picture, because it is a rather large sign with the main lettering in the middle, but then two wings. This also, we would propose to refurbish. The stucco finish here is more of a rough finish, and we propose to, again, for the purpose of matching the most recent sign there on Daly Drive, to refinish this with a smooth, with smooth stucco. And also then a mockup of "Welcome to the" added to that sign there. That's just that center portion. And then moving to the smooth, concrete-style signs, this one at the corner of Lewis Road and Las Poses Road, and again, a mockup. The lettering here is, existing lettering is even a little bit different, it's all caps. So the proposed "Welcome to the," if it were to be added, would be recommended to be all caps also. So here's a mockup of that there. And then same thing on Santa Rosa Road, at the city limit, another smooth, already smooth concrete sign, again, the all caps lettering with the mockup of "Welcome to the" added. These two signs are in really good shape, they're already smooth. We wouldn't propose any refurbishment to these. They're actually maintained regularly, because there's landscaping around them and lighting. Our landscape maintenance cleans them. If there is a need to paint them in the future, we would do that as a part of regular maintenance. So we brought back estimated costs for the additional lettering and refurbishing the signs, at $8,000 for the lettering, $22,000 rough estimate for refurbishing the signs. If direction is given to move forward, we would obtain more detailed pricing from a contractor and move forward with the work as directed by council. I would say, as mentioned in the staff report, appropriation of unassigned general fund balance will be needed for that cost, to cover the estimated cost, whichever direction is given. So that would be needed. The recommendation out of committee was to refurbish the two signs, as mentioned, and not adding the "Welcome to the" to any signs. So the suggested action tonight is to direct staff, based on this information, as deemed appropriate. That concludes my report.
I don't know who the committee members are. Would committee members like to speak to the item before the council app?
Sure. So our recommendation kind of speaks for itself in many, many ways, but why we didn't recommend the "Welcome to the" was simply because we had five signs in three different fonts, and two of the signs, "Welcome to the" is almost, you can't, you barely can make it out along Lewis and Las Poses and Santa Rosa, driving into the city. We think the signs are welcoming, just as they are, but if you were to want to make them more welcoming, then we should certainly refurbish them and make sure they look beautiful as people enter the city. But that just simply adding "Welcome to the" is just aesthetically on some signs would look unbalanced from the eye, that it would look kind of like an afterthought, and that at least in two of the signs, it would be rather ineffective, and that people just wouldn't notice it in going the speed that they are going down those respective roads.
Susan, did you have more to add?
No, that was a good summary.
Okay. Any other questions? I have one. This does not include the sign coming from the north, the southbound one on the freeway by McGrath Farms.
That sign actually no longer exists.
Oh, really?
Right. There was one, you're correct, and that was removed some time ago.
Okay.
I asked the exact same question, that's what he told me, I said, "I never noticed it was gone."
Was it the same answer?
Yes, it was the same answer.
Okay. Well, it shows that I haven't been paying attention to the signs. Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Kildee?
As I recall bringing this up a while ago, I think the City of Camarillo had to have state-of-the-art signs in our city, because it's a gateway to our city. I'm not really have strong opinions, "Welcome to the," but I do have a strong opinion that our signs should be some of the best in the county, if not the best in the county. So if this goes a long way towards, you know, attaining that, I'm in favor of it.
Anybody want to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tremblay.
Wrong button, there we go. I agree with what Mr. Kildee said, and I just want to thank the committee for looking at this and taking a look at what it would be like visually. So I would concur with the recommendation. So I'll go ahead and -- did you already move? I'll go ahead and move this recommended item.
Okay, suggested action?
Thank you. I'll move the suggested action with thanks to the committee.
The suggested action is a good direction from the council. Do you want to move the action as originally referred by the subcommittee?
Suggested action is to remove it without the lettering.
Without the lettering, correct, consistent with the committees. I'm looking for a form. Yeah, okay, you're right. The motion would be then to go ahead with the sign refurbishments, but not the additional, not the additional lettering. I'll second.
And could I interject there? If we could assign an authorization of a, I believe is the right way to do it, an appropriation of unassigned general fund balance not to exceed. I would recommend $25,000. We don't have the details yet of the pricing there, but I believe with that dollar amount, we could work with.
Happy to add that to my motion, I don't want to make it any more complicated than it already is.
And the second?
And I'll amend this, or I'll second your amended motion.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Everybody understand? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. New business, oral communications which do not require action. City manager?
I have no comments at this time, Mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
I have no comments.
Mr. Kildee?
Let's see, meetings attended, I had a meeting of ARSD on July 15, and with Ms. Santangelo, I had an investment committee meeting of July 27. And I mean, the investment committee was really interesting, and there's more to come here. I really appreciate when Jason comes down and talks to us about state of affairs economically, and there is a suggestion perhaps to have him come and maybe make, at some appropriate time, to make an appearance in front of our council, yet to be determined. And with that, that's all I have.
Mr. Tremblay?
Thanks. Couple of things, meetings attended since July 14. Actually, I took a tour of the D-Salter with Dave and Lucy on July 15, and it was an excellent tour, so thank you both. On July 16, I had a special meeting of the Board of Directors for Metrolink. On July 23, I had a regular meeting of the Metrolink Board of Directors, which, by the way, as you all know, Darren Kettle, who has been the executive director of VCTC for 14 years, has been now named the new CEO for Metrolink. So congratulations to Mr. Kettle. On July today, I actually had another Metrolink meeting, but an ad hoc committee dealing with their fuel purchase program, and this afternoon, a Fox Canyon GMA board meeting. Two items, number one, my wife and I had the pleasure of going to the Concert in the Park last Saturday. I pinch-hit for Mr. Kildee in terms of making remarks, I just wanted to extend a thanks to the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District for doing an excellent job, and it was a good, I think a good time was had by everyone. The second is an issue that I think we've all received an email on. I know that I had a resident in my district really impacted tragically on a coyote issue with their pet, when a coyote, very aggressive coyote, basically ambushed this pet in the gentleman's backyard at nighttime, and the gentleman was 10 feet away from the pet. And the coyote ended up killing the pet, which is a long way of saying that there has been a very noticeable increase, in my view, in our part, in my district and perhaps elsewhere, of activity by coyotes. And to lose a pet like that is just wretched. But there, I think there have been an increased killing of dogs and cats by coyotes in residential neighborhoods. There has certainly been increased sightings, not just during night, but also during the day. It's not just nocturnal and an increased amount of aggression. The cause is, well, there are multiple causes, but includes drought, lack of food, et cetera. And I think we have to recognize that coyotes are ubiquitous in open space and in the suburban interface, but the concern, and the fact is that coyotes play an important part in the ecosystem, in terms of rodent population control and so on. But the concern is the increased activity and the danger to pets and to small children. And so, one thing I would ask, we received, I know that there was an article in City Scene, which was great, I would also ask that we can, and I think there was a recent posting on the city's Facebook page, if I saw that, and that was back on July 19. But I would also request that we consider placing a link on the Hot Topics section of the website, so, and any other additional means of media, so that we can communicate to folks from an education standpoint, what can be done and what are the current policies, both for Ventura County Animal Services, as well as California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Malchey?
I had it easy in the last two weeks, and I didn't have any meetings attended. I was out of town for most of the time, vacation and a family wedding. Just two quick things, I wanted to echo what Mr. Tremblay just stated in regards to the coyotes. I had been in communication with the same gentleman who had his dog killed in his backyard, and there has been a rash, a significant increase in attack sightings and even stalking, while people are walking their pet on a city sidewalk where there's coyotes, essentially stalking and following them. So I asked staff, I've already communicated with staff privately about it, but that we worked to step up communication to the public. We look at targeted, specifically in areas, Mission Oaks, and that's Tony, that's yours and I's district, we both share that, or parts of it. Obviously, there certainly, we've known, there are coyote dens down in like the riverbed, in and around that area, and coyotes are gonna, they're gonna look for prey in and around the region of their respective dens. And so seeing that, at least a lot of what I've been inbound with, all the incidents I'm aware of, and I've counted six now, have happened in that general vicinity, where we can try to target messaging to people in that vicinity, because we know that is a particular issue there, then that's better than doing this shotgun blast in hopes that some people there catch it, where we can work with the Ventura County Animal Control to get out there, and there had been discussion about kind of targeted neighborhood campaigns, educational campaigns, people going out, like pretty much on the ground, where we can do that, all the better. I have pets, they're like, they are members of my family. To lose one like that is unconscionable, and that's something I would ever want to go through, and I feel I have a lot of pain and sympathy for those who've done, who've gone through it. Simple things, you know, your doggy door, if you have a doggy door into your access to your house, keep it closed. Coyotes can get through your doggy door, and they may actually enter your home. And there have been reports of that, not here locally, not that I've heard of, but in doing some research, it happens. So keep your pets inside, but whatever we can do to educate the public, so that way no one is inflicted with this kind of, this kind of thing. So that aside, I did go to Indiana for a wedding, and if you fly into the Fort Wayne Airport, which is in like the northeast, it's a small airport, kind of reminiscent of Camarillo's actually, and what was really interesting was, right next door to that airport is going up a very, very large building, and it's an Amazon fulfillment center. So I just want to keep that ever, ever present on top of the mind.
Ms. Santangelo?
Okay, on July 21, I attended the CPA Executive Committee meeting. July 27, yesterday, was Investment Committee, and I agree, I always really enjoy Jason's reports, and I think he, when we bring the policy change, I think Jason is planning on being here. And I don't have anything to add, except that coyotes are why my cats are indoor cats. I grew up in the estates, and coyotes were always in our lives. So it's interesting to see, or to hear about, how many residents more in the central area of town are having these run-ins with coyotes. So that's all I have.
I attended a, the only meeting I attended this time was a Contract Cities Legislative Committee meeting. The Legislative Committee is extremely concerned about the possibility of passage of SB 9, SB 10, and SB 519. SB 9, Mr. Tremblay wrote a letter to the paper about. Some of the individuals on this committee have started their own website, it's called stopsb9.org, and they're trying to get as many residents of the state of California interested in SB 9, because it's a very dangerous bill if you respect the ability of a city to zone, especially for single-family zoning. It would completely destroy that ability of a city. And they're trying to get as many letters from individuals to their respective assembly people and senate members in the state. They're hoping to have people, have them bombarded with letters of opposition, because the feeling of some lobbyists in the Contract Cities Association is, these bills have legs, and there's a very good chance they might get passed. In addition, SB 519 is the bill introduced by Senator Weiner that would legalize LSD and date rape drug and some other things. And they believe that that bill has legs and has a good chance of passage. So if there's anybody out there who's interested in those bills not being passed, please let your state senator and your state, your assembly member know it. So with having said that, I will ask an unusual thing, because there are no heirs to send anything to, but I would like to adjourn in the memory of Susan Lacy, who served 12 years on the County Board of Supervisors. She represented Ventura, but I think she represented Ventura very well. She worked very closely with Maggie Erickson Kildee, who served 20 years, but she was on, while Susan Lacy was on. on, while Susan Lacy was on. And she always had Camarillo's interests at heart. So, although there are no heirs to send a certificate to, I would like to close in her memory, with no opposition. Okay, with all of that, we will recess this meeting. We will be going back into closed session. And we will come back at 7 o'clock to continue our regular business.
Call the meeting of the City Council back to order, ask the record to reflect that all council members are here. And the first thing is, we had a special meeting with a closed session. I'll ask the city attorney if there's an announcement after that.
Yes, the special, or excuse me, the closed sessions were in the regular agenda, and the answer is, there's no reportable action on either item.
Okay. With that, I will close the special meeting of the City Council, which actually was on the Cloud Nine hangar. At this point, we have a presentation of our new district attorney, Eric Nazarenko.
Good evening, Mayor Craven, Vice Mayor Mulche, members of the Camrio City Council, City Manager Ramirez, and City Attorney Peric. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening, introducing myself and sharing with you my first six months as your district attorney. Just in way of background, I, like you, was a city council member, and also a deputy district attorney, where I prosecuted primarily sexual assault and child molestation. And despite being the DA, I want to share with you a very short story. I was speaking to a member of the defense bar, and at the end of the conversation, I asked him, is there anything I can do on your behalf? Can I be a further assistance? And I expected him to share with me, perhaps there was a case I needed to look into, maybe he wanted to talk about my mental health proposals, and he turned to me and he said, can you go ahead and inform me when my street's going to be repaved? You never really leave the city council. It's always something that people care about, and it's such a service that you all perform. So, thank you. I'd like to begin by talking about safety. There is a crime trend that I am seeing here, as well as in other parts of our county. And before I go there, I want to acknowledge the deep partnership and collaboration between our office and Chief Tennyson, and also with your sheriff, Bill Ayub. Yesterday, I was in Simi Valley, and this crime trend was a topic of discussion. The day before, in Santa Paula, it too was a topic of discussion, and it's two words, catalytic converters. I want to share with you why this is a problem, and what the office of the district attorney is doing about it. And I think the best way to do so is through two anecdotes. As you may already know, there was an arrest at Camrio Springs Road. It was a CHP arrest involving a spike strip, and I just want to preface these remarks by mentioning that these are allegations. This case is still pending. But this case arose when the reporting party saw individuals taking items from underneath the car. It was a 2009 Prius. And the reporting party notified police, there was somewhat of a chase. It ended, as I mentioned, on Camrio Springs. And in the car, they found tools, and they also found more than one catalytic converter. They can be taken within 30 seconds. They are valued, in terms of fencing, at $300 and $400 each. It is a highly marketable, yet obviously illegal, item. Now, in that case, what did the office of the district attorney do? There were three suspects, so we charged a conspiracy. We charged felony vandalism for the alleged removal of the catalytic converter from underneath the Prius, and we also charged felony grand theft for the actual taking of that catalytic converter. I also want to share with you somewhat of a sobering story, also involving catalytic converters. This arose from a Lowe's, not in your jurisdiction, but nearby. The individual who reported the crime was sitting in the Lowe's parking lot. He noticed a car, a truck, next to him, suddenly moving. He saw someone next to his vehicle come out. He had one of these saws with him, one of these mechanical saws. And I tell this story because most people believe that this happened at midnight, perhaps very early in the morning. It happened at 4:00 PM in the Lowe's parking lot. What can we all do? Obviously, when possible, park our cars inside garages in secure places. I acknowledge and understand, that may not always be possible. Park them in secure settings with plenty of light. And also, have a regiment every night for locking your car, because oftentimes, we see in our caseload individuals who say, I just left my car unlocked, and I woke up the next morning, and all of my belongings within it were gone. So, this is obviously an issue that the district attorney takes extremely seriously, and I want to acknowledge the collaboration with Chief Tennyson and the Ventura County Sheriff's Office in prosecuting these thefts and vandalism cases. I want to talk a little bit about victims, because that is something that, as a district attorney, I care deeply about. You have, as residents of Ventura County, the Family Justice Center, and I'm very proud to say, thanks to Supervisor Long and the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, the Family Justice Center was purchased by the County of Ventura last month. We paid, as the office of district attorney, $2 million; the county paid the other $2 million. Rather than continue to lease that every year at a cost of $300,000, it's now owned by the county and administered by the office of the district attorney. Let me share with you some statistics specific to Camrio, which will give you an overview of the demographics of victims that we see come into the Family Justice Center. I'd like to begin by sharing with you, from March 2019 to June 2021, 292 Camrio residents visited the Family Justice Center. Now, I want to pause here and just mention what the Family Justice Center is. This is a one-stop shop for crime victims of hate crimes, of elder abuse, of domestic violence, and also of sexual violence. So, individuals who are traumatized mentally, physically, psychologically, have the ability to go to the Family Justice Center and receive resources, such as help with obtaining a restraining order, help filling out reimbursement forms for hospital and medical expenses, short-term housing, counseling, therapy, and also assistance with family law and civil matters. Perhaps they need assistance after a domestic violence incident, obtaining custody of their children, going through a guardianship or marital dissolution. So, I mentioned that 292 Camrio residents have received services; 86% or 251 of those were women. In terms of the ethnic breakdown, 38% were Latinx, 46% identified as Anglo or Caucasian, 4% African-American, and 7% Asian. Now, in terms of the age of the victims that visited the Family Justice Center, 71% were between the ages of 25 and 74. What did they seek? When they went there, what service did they want to assist them? The vast majority, 62%, sought a restraining order; 16% wanted to speak to a counselor or an advocate; 7% wanted some type of civil legal service; and 5% sought shelter or housing. Half of those who visited the Family Justice Center said they had minor children in their home. And then, lastly, we inquire, what is your relationship with the suspect? How are you related with the perpetrator of this alleged crime? 76% said they were either a spouse in a dating relationship, or the alleged perpetrator lived in their household. This underscores the deep problems in our society with familial violence. It's something that the office of the district attorney and I take incredibly seriously. And towards that end, when I became the DA, I went ahead and created a supervision position for domestic violence. These are among the most sensitive, high-profile cases. They deserve and merit attention and close scrutiny, and I'm very proud to say that this supervisor has done just that. People inquire about, what is your philosophy as our district attorney? As DA, I intend to keep Ventura County safe. We are blessed to live in an exceptionally safe county, and as its top prosecutor, I want to make sure it continues to stay such. We also need to be fair and reasonable, and at the same time, we can be tough and strong. And what do I mean by that? In our office, I want the attorneys and the DAs to value each case based upon the individual facts and circumstances presented, to look at the totality of the case. In some instances, that will mean they will have to seek the maximum punishment. The person is violent, they have a criminal record, they need to be held accountable. In other instances, I want to empower the deputy district attorneys to look for alternatives: mental health court, diversion. If it's a low-level misdemeanor, perhaps they can end the cycle of reincarceration and recidivism by offering treatment, intervention, and support. So, towards that end, the office of the district attorney will be creating the first dedicated mental health unit. I'm proud to announce that, thanks to Supervisor Long and the County Board of Supervisors, we received an appropriation last month for two additional prosecutors dedicated to the field of mental health. We also have a consultant right now who is drafting policies and procedures that will help guide this unit. How do we treat those who are suffering from mental illness? How do we make sure that society is protected and safe? And how do we address the needs of these individual clients? I also believe that in 2021, the district attorney has to be engaged in the community. It's so important that the DA seek out and value the input of the communities we represent. Yesterday, I was in the community of Simi Valley; the day before that, in Santa Paula; and over the weekend, in Thousand Oaks. How do we build trust and confidence in our decisions? By listening, by reaching out, and at times, getting outside of the courtroom. And one of the issues that I take extremely seriously, which shapes the organization, as you all know, its culture, its tone, is the people you hire. So, we hired the first Asian-American Pacific Islander chief assistant in the County of Ventura's history. Why do I think that's important and worth noting? Because she has been a victim of hate crimes. So, when she looks at cases and reviews decisions involving hate crimes, she can bring her own experience to the fore. We also are proud to announce that we have a post-bar law clerk coming from Camrio, another one hailing from the community of Moore Park. And for the first time, we brought in a Latinx chief deputy from the county of Los Angeles, someone who had prosecuted 26 murder cases to verdict, and he too is the grandson of Bracero. So, he will bring his background, his decision-making, his experiences to the office of the district attorney. I'm proud to say that we have a number of attorneys that we are now interviewing, that I hope to bring into the office, but it's a great opportunity to help serve and protect Camrio and all the residents of Ventura County with new prosecutors. And then, lastly, I want to make a pledge to all of you, and that is to make my office available to assist and inform and educate in whatever way I can, as well as my office. We have now, in the district attorney's office, what we call a public speakers bureau. DAs who are willing to speak to schools, to Rotarians, to civic service organizations, to share what they are doing, their courtroom experiences, because we want to prevent crime, and we also want to hold those who commit it accountable for doing so. So, please, if you have a speaking engagement, if there's an opportunity for someone on behalf of the office of district attorney to reach out and be at a meeting, whether it's a town hall, whether it's Leisure Village, or wherever, we would be happy to accommodate you and make that happen. At this time, I'd like to conclude my remarks. I want to thank you, Mayor Craven, for allowing me to address the City of Camrio City Council. If there's time, I can always answer questions. If not, I'd be happy to answer them electronically. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tremblay.
Thanks for coming this evening to share your thoughts with us. I wanted to ask you a little bit about the two new prosecutors who would be assigned for mental health cases. And I see that we also, I'm really happy about the Family Justice Center. I see we have Mr. Jump here tonight as well, who heads up the Family Justice Center, so I wanted to be sure that I recognized him and thanked him for all of his work on behalf of victims. Having been lucky enough to visit the jail and the TMU unit at the jail, which is nationally now recognized, this seems to me to be a very good and consistent philosophy, together with what the Sheriff's Department has done in the jail. But could you elaborate a little bit on what these two prosecutors are going to do within? Is that going to be for general assignment? Or can you give us a little more clarity on what those prosecutors are going to do?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Tremblay. Right now, in the office, if you have a case that may have a mental health component, you're going to handle it along with all your other cases. So, you may have, for example, general felonies. There may be, in your caseload of 50 or 60 general felonies, 10 of which have some mental health component. So, the idea is to give those 10 cases to someone who have specialized knowledge. And what do I mean by that? They're able to understand DSM-based illnesses. They're able to look at police reports to determine whether or not, based upon what they read, body-worn camera footage that they view, whether or not someone suffers from it. They have to make the legal inquiry, whether or not there's a nexus between that illness and the commission of the crime. They also have to have, frankly, a civil component, one that deals with different avenues in the law, and frankly, different code sections of state law, the Welfare and Institutions Code, the Probate Code. So, the whole notion of this unit is to place in a repository, if you will, specialized knowledge that people will be able to utilize when looking at cases. And to give you a very specific example, perhaps, as a condition of probation, we want to offer medication-assisted treatment. Maybe they have bipolarity. So, the whole notion here is, as a term and condition, Your Honor, of this person's grant of probation, we believe, in consultation with behavioral health and others, that they should be given some type of medication assistance, so they do not decompensate. That would be the whole idea of this unit, and I believe it'll provide public safety and also assist the county.
So, if I understand, and then correctly, it's really in an umbrella role. It's all-encompassing. You see these dedicated prosecutors as being of assistance across the board to the office. I mean, and I guess that runs the gamut, does it run the gamut, from the initial charging decisions all the way through trial and imposition of liability on a defendant? I'm trying to remember the correct wording, but anyway, you see it running the entire course of a case, correct?
Imposition a sentence.
That's what I was searching for. It's from an old civil lawyer, what can I say?
Absolutely. You know, these cases can, you know, in heavy caseloads, not always get, frankly, the amount of attention or resources that they need, because they are time-intensive. They're motion-intensive, they need to be written on by attorneys, and also, they need to have specialized dedicated knowledge, which includes relationships and partnerships with behavioral health, with nonprofit providers, with NAMI, with those engaged in the rehabilitation community. Now, to be frank, there are going to be some individuals who are so serious a threat, they cannot in any way be given an alternative disposition. We have to protect the public first. You know, they may need to remain in custody. There's the new mental health jail facility that will come up near Todd Road Jail. But what I would like this unit to do is But what I would like this unit to do is really understand, when they get a case at the very origins, what are the options available to the prosecution? You know, we tend to take these cases, and we have traditional processes, and those are all good ones. But in certain instances, there need to be, at the very front end, conversations, discussions about how to address it differently than we have in the past. You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Kildy.
District Attorney, I want to thank you for being here. In my years on the council, I think this is one of the first. It's been somewhat rare to have a DA come and address us, no reflection on your predecessors at all. But I appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to be here tonight. The question I have, I know that mental health is definitely on the minds of many, many people here. And you had mentioned some recruitment and some hiring. Do you have a number of, not necessarily just mental health, but other attorneys that you may be in the market for hiring? Or is it just a specific group that are very, you know, with specific skills that you're looking for?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kildy, for the question. To answer it, we are looking right now for up to six deputy district attorneys. We had a number of retirements shortly after the COVID reopening. In fact, I had an interview today with a prospective candidate who did not like what was happening in LA County and wanted to come to ours. So we are looking for attorneys above and beyond just the mental health field. This is to replace those who have recently retired, veterans of 30, 35 years of the DA's office. So I believe that this will be something that will be ongoing. I want to spend the amount of time necessary to find the best qualified people. But yes, it's not just the mental health prosecutor position, but overall prosecutor positions for any of the units within the DA's office. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mrs. Santangelo.
It's not a question, just comments. Are we on comments?
Sure.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you for coming out and speaking to us. I think it's really important that you're getting to the cities and letting all of us get to know you better and your values. And I just wanted to commend you already for your commitment to diversity in hiring and your attention to mental health. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. I appreciate that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, that gets us to public comments. I will take the cards in the order that I received them. We have some new speakers, I see, so let me set the ground rules. Public comments, each speaker is restricted to three minutes. There's a clock that you can see here, and I can see a similar clock. It's in red right now, and it will count down. When it gets to one minute remaining, it will turn to yellow. And then there will be a tone, a sound, don't let it distract you. Just keep going, you have one minute to finish up your comments. And when the red light comes on, I will stop you, because I feel it's unfair to let some people continue and go on when other people have respected our time limit. So the first speaker I have, and if there's anybody else who would like to speak to us who hasn't filled out a blue card, please fill out a card there on the back there and put them in the box right here by the city clerk. So the first speaker is Ricardo Costaneda. And when you come up, if the microphone is a little too high or a little too low for you, just feel free to pull it up or down, so we and the television audience can tell exactly what you're saying.
Okay, this should be fine. Thank you all for your time. This is my second visit here. I'll try not to get emotional. I'm a double Scorpio, so I've got the odds against me. I presented you with a paper, I hope you all have seen. It says a lot. It really does. I don't know what else I could add to it, really, besides not just what this involves regarding a safer environment for motorcyclists. Let me read this so everyone can read, so everyone knows. "With granted permission from Zachary Grayson's parents, I feel there is a need for a designated optional motorcycle lane in honor of Colby Stoker and Zachary Grayson. A motorcycle lane where diamond lanes don't exist, and when available, by sharing the inside emergency lane, where miles of open unused lanes can be posted as optional for use by motorcycles, where cars won't be impeding into them." Now, this sounds pretty crazy, but I'm sure someone told the same to the guy who said he wanted to go to the moon, right? So here's where it starts. And I would love for Camarillo to be the first to initiate something like this. I'll go on. The pictures show lanes, miles of lanes, never being used, except for emergency vehicles or otherwise. It's a safe corridor for motorcycles. And it can be a positive impact in so many ways, systematically. Less cars on the highway, if it's safer for motorcycles, less pollution, less road rage, less traffic. It goes on and on. I can't see any reason for this not really becoming into fruition. I'll do whatever I can, within my power, to make this happen. I have been granted permission for going onto the highway by Caltrans, and I'll do whatever I can to make this happen. So please, so many of us are being plucked off this earth, so many unique people that are risking, just like firefighters and astronauts, but we're not getting paid for it, to risk our lives, getting plucked off this earth. It's not fair. Please, let's do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't really interact with people on public comments, but let me ask you this. Are you talking about city streets or freeways?
Freeway.
Thank you very much. Next card is from Karen Block-Davis.
Good evening, members of the council.
Just pull the microphone down a little bit, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here because we have a coyote problem that we believe has reached crisis level. So you've emailed with my husband, as has Councilmember Tremblay, and I think also you have as well. Obviously, it's an emotional issue for us. But more than that, we're concerned about the safety of the children in our neighborhood. You cannot go on Nextdoor or on any of the other sites without seeing a coyote attack almost every day. Coyotes used to be nocturnal, meaning they were only out at night when everybody else was safe inside their homes. That's not the case anymore. Because probably the drought has caused them to leave their natural habitats, they have found their way into our backyards, searching for food and water. Last Thursday night, they found our dog. She was seven pounds of love, devastating to us, a family member. My concern is the pictures that I have of the same coyote in my Nextdoor neighbor's backyard at 8:30 in the morning, hunting around the playset that his children play on. The problem is getting worse, and we believe that something should be done about it. Now, the County of Ventura has a coyote management plan that is available to all of you. The first thing you should know is that coyotes are not on the endangered species list, nor on the protected list. This plan is not much of a plan, to be honest with you. It talks about educating the public. How did we educate the public? We put a blurb in the city scene about having motion detector lights and not leaving food out for your pets. Well, we have a motion detector light, we don't leave food out for our pets, and my husband was six feet away when the coyote attacked our little dog. I don't know what else he could do. He got up every night at 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the morning to take this dog outside. She never went out by herself, ever. And because the problem has gotten so extreme in our area, and you hear about it in Newberry Park, Camarillo, Ventura, we're asking for you to take a closer look at this management plan and understand that more needs to be done. It does, if you also, we've done, unfortunately, a lot of research in the last six days and become more educated on coyotes than we ever wanted to. What the literature tells us, what the studies tell us, is that as these coyotes get more emboldened and brazen and walk down the street in the middle of the day, they move from rodents to small pets to small children. We don't want to see the newspaper headline that a small child has been mauled, or God forbid, killed because of this coyote problem. So we're asking the council...
Thank you very much.
...to do what they can. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker is Miranda Patton. Maybe Miranda was the one with the child who left. We'll call again at the end. Oh. Is this Miranda?
This is Miranda.
Okay.
I have a partner in crime here tonight. So I just wanted to come in and support Betsy Artuso. I had seen the article in the paper over the weekend and was concerned about it, and wanted to just come in and show my support for her and the difficulties that a lot of our community members face with transit and when we have transit fare increases. I currently am on the Ventura County Transportation Commission's Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee and the Social Services Transportation Advisory Committee. It's a mouthful. And I chair that committee, and I also represent Camarillo. And, you know, I just wanted to offer that committee as a potential resource to all of you for soliciting comments and feedback whenever there's an opportunity to have conversations about transit issues, transportation, mobility issues, access issues. We have a really diverse committee and have committee members that really could speak to a lot of these issues related to disabilities, vulnerable populations, people who are transit-dependent, people who have specific circumstances where they need, where they rely on this as their means of daily transportation and to get around and to really interact with their community. And Betsy is definitely a huge part of our community. I've known her since I moved to Camarillo in 2005. She and I worked together on the Camarillo Friends of Camarillo Dog Parks Committee, helping to bring some much-needed resources for people with pets and seniors with pets. And, you know, I see her over the last several years, you see her often traveling up and down the streets in Camarillo. She's both active in her wheelchair and moving around the community. And I would hate to see her not to have that access. And so I just wanted to come out and show support for her tonight, and offer the C-TAC as our resource to vet and seek comments for these kind of issues when they come out. That's all I have tonight. Thank you for letting me...
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Betsy Artuso, and I'm here to talk about the increase in the cat and the bus pass fare. And I'd like to start with, in that article that was in the July 23 Acorn with regard to the price increase, it was stated that a city official had said that notification of the May 26 meeting and the vote to increase rates were posted in various places, such as the bus and on social media. And I just want to let you know, the only notice I was aware of was a post on the bus itself that I noticed after the May 26 vote, which had the price increase on that posting. And it was jaw-dropping. And I think the public would have been better served if a greater push for information with regard to what was coming up. Because, you know, with that significant amount of increase, I think more information to the public would have been greatly appreciated. And I know I would have been here. That doesn't do anything good now, but I would have been here then. The other thing is, I wanted to mention also with regard to public information, I looked at the Camarillo websites, the City of Camarillo, CI.camarillo.ca.us, the Camarillo Transit website, all of which give a link to the guide to ride. And those are showing the old rates, the old bus pass rates, the old individual ride rate for ADA, seniors, general population. So those are all showing old rates. So that needs to be updated, by the way, because that's confusing for people. And I wanted to tell you why the bus pass is important to me, what it means to me. To state the economic value of the bus pass would be stating the obvious. And, but that's precisely why I'm here, is to try to restore that affordability and that economic value that we had. Also, it was, it is relatively easy and simple. I would just go to the cashier, and she would give me two months of bus passes. And sometimes she'd do a little upsell, and she'd say, do you want three months? I'd say to that, yes, I do. And that was $75 at that point, by three months bus pass. Now it is $240, which is almost my annual budget for the, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Meredith Cashman. Just pull the microphone down. There you go.
Thank you. Okay. So, good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Meredith Cashman. I'm a local psychotherapist and social worker. And I'm here to talk about the recent cat fare hike. So it is my understanding that the fare was recently increased dramatically, and I'm here to tell you that I think you guys made a grave mistake. This cat service is funded with taxpayer money, which implies that you have an obligation to the citizens. You are here because of and for the citizens of Camarillo, and I believe you've done them dirty with this one. These rates have been raised unreasonably. We've heard it here tonight, you've heard it previous nights. And in particular, I want to talk about how this affects the most disenfranchised of our population. So let me be clear, this change doesn't affect me. I carry a lot of privilege. I'm healthy. I have two Ivy League degrees. I'm lucky enough to be employed right now during a pandemic with record unemployment. And I'm able-bodied. I drove my car here, and I'm betting that you all did too. This isn't about us. This is about the folks who cannot drive themselves around town to get their basic needs met. These folks rely on the cat service to get their groceries, to attend doctor's appointments, to visit their families. And this is what keeps them mobile and self-determined. Being in public office, you have a responsibility to support and protect the most vulnerable among us. And that involves stepping out of your shoes and into the shoes of the people that you serve. For folks in wheelchairs, for people with other disabilities, the effect of your recent decision means a fare hike from $25 a month to $80 a month, which we've just heard. That may not be a whole lot of money to you, but it is a whole lot of money to a whole lot of people that you serve. Over the course of a year, this means they went from paying $300 a year to $960 a year. That's over a three-fold increase, and it's not okay. And during a pandemic, when unemployment's high, when people are stretched financially, and when our normal systems and way of life have been disrupted, this is not the time and this is not the way to do it. I understand that this decision was made... I understand that this decision was made without much public input. Maybe it was an oversight, I'm not sure. But something of this magnitude should have more public input. And I hope you're hearing it tonight and I hope you're hearing it in previous nights. And this impacts a lot of people that had no idea that a fare hike was being discussed. So whatever the reason, we're discussing it now. You've heard from lots of people tonight. You're hearing from me. You may have not recognized it when you made this decision, but I hope you can recognize it now. I'm asking you to right this wrong and to open this back up for public consideration and do what's reasonable and what's morally right to do. Please, let's reconsider the fare hike. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker card is Richard Figueroa Barajas.
Good evening, Council. For the fourth time, I'm here to speak with you, Richard Figueroa Barajas. This time, it's a little more personal. I've tried to bring to your attention the impact that it's had over the ADA and seniors. Just so happens that I haven't been able to go to the dog park with my service dog since the price hike because I can only go to those appointments that I have that are more, that I'm in need for my physical issues. So a week ago Monday, instead of taking the Dolaride up to the Mission Oaks Dog Park, I am now forced to walk half a mile to the nearest park, which is not a dog park. And I, sorry, my TBI kicks in. I, so my dog's not unable to run free where it only gets to be a dog two days, two hours a day. And there are no other dogs for it to play with. Anyhow, on the 19th, just as we were coming onto the main block to head to my housing area, a car crash was happened. And being a former paramedic, as well as as a retired military person, I went to aid assistance. And unfortunately, going between both cars, the battery exploded on me. So even with these injuries, I feel it's important to come and speak to you. You have the privilege of not having to answer us. You have the privilege to decide. I personally feel that this appointed rate hike was not publicly announced the way people say it was. Once again, I've been riding daily since January, and not once did I ever see anything. I interviewed eight drivers, like I mentioned last time, and only two said that maybe they thought they saw it. Anyway, I wish you would reconsider, put it on the docket. Let's hear, let's hear, let's weigh the numbers. It's a moral and ethical issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Spencer Ritchie.
Hello, I'm Spencer Ritchie. And I am getting really, 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 really beyond done with the whole, like, I can understand the whole, oh, we need to make it up to the 220 fare box recovery ratio for it. But then if that's, if the rate increases are going to stay, then the next obvious move would be to implement some kind of aid. Because the way things are currently are with the increases and no aid is, one, you have decorated war veterans like Richard Figueroa Barajas struggling to afford bus trips. That should not be happening at all. That's just a huge disrespect to all of our veterans. Two, the whole reason we have stuff like the Dolaride in the first place is because the Americans with Disabilities Act mandates that there be a parent transit system in place for those who cannot make it all the way to a regular fixed route bus stop. If that system is too expensive for most disabled people and elderly people to use, then could you say that there really is a system that enables people to use public transit without having to physically make it to a fixed route bus stop? And then the third thing is, a lot of people, Betsy and Richard are far from the only people who are skimming, who are skimping on public transit because they cannot afford the monthly passes anymore. I understand that the reason that the fares and like the bus passes were raised was to meet that fare box, that fare box recovery ratio. However, again, that doesn't help make up the fare box recovery ratio if people are just not buying the bus passes and not taking the buses as much. Again, it would be the logical and the humane solution to provide aid at this point. And I actually wrote a petition that is up on iPetition.com. It's called "Petition Against the City of Camarillo Raising Bus Costs 220% Without Providing Aid." And there's, it's both an iPetition where it has 50 signatures so far, and there's hard copies of it floating around. Basically, you have the next two city council meetings to bring it onto the docket, and we will be collecting the petition signatures the whole time.
Thank you, Spencer.
And we are this close to-
To basically pick any city- Your time is up, Spencer.
I know.
There are no other cards that have been turned in. Would anybody else like to speak to us on an issue that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will move on to our public hearing for the evening. An ordinance amending the Camarillo Municipal Code to allow for alcohol sales in theaters. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Jackie Lee will be presenting this item. But I just want to preface it to say that we're excited about this zoning ordinance amendment for two main reasons. One, because it'll help with business recovery post-pandemic, and also because it's consistent with our recently adopted Economic Development Strategic Plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jackie.
And Jackie, if you'll let me interrupt just a second, I'm going to make a statement because I have disqualified myself on many other things that happened in the Camarillo Commons Zone. And this does mention the Camarillo Commons Zone. But I asked the city attorney, and he checked, and it was determined that this does not involve a specific request or a specific lot. It is included with many other zones in the city. So therefore, I'm able to participate. Okay, now the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mary Craven, and members of the council. The item before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance of the Camarillo Municipal Code to allow theaters to sell alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption under a conditional use permit in the Camarillo Commons Mixed Use, the Professional Office, Camarillo Old Town, Commercial Plan Development, and the Light Manufacturing Zones. So before we go further, I'd like to provide a little bit of background on this request. In August of 2019, Roxy Theaters, which is located at 5001 Verdugo Way, submitted an application with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for a license to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption. However, being that the city does not allow alcoholic beverages in theaters, the city issued a letter of protest. Although the city issued a letter of protest, staff brought to the city council at a study session in November of 2019 a concept to permit theaters to sell alcohol under a conditional use permit. The council supported the concept and provided unanimous concurrence for staff to begin processing a zoning ordinance amendment. And you'll notice a gap in the timeline, and that was because of the COVID-19 pandemic and theaters being closed. So staff shifted priorities and paused the processing of this ordinance amendment last year. So in May of this year, staff presented the proposed ordinance amendment to the Planning Commission Ordinance Committee, which provided direction to bring forward the proposal to the Planning Commission with the recommendation of approval to the city council. Then on June 6 of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment to the city council. So right now, theaters are permitted in the Camarillo Commons Mixed Use, the Camarillo Old Town, and Commercial Plan Development Zones under a planned development permit. Theaters are also permitted in the Professional Office and the Light Manufacturing Zones under a conditional use permit. However, no theaters in any of these zones are currently permitted to sell alcohol. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment would not change the existing permitting requirements for theaters that do not wish to sell alcohol. However, if a new or an existing theater wanted to be able to sell alcohol, they would be able to apply for a conditional use permit under the proposed regulations. The ordinance amendment also does not propose any changes to which of the zones theaters are allowed. So on this slide is photos of our existing movie theaters in Camarillo, and there's three of them. They're all in the Commercial Plan Development Zone, and they are the Roxy Stadium 11, the Paseo Camarillo Cinemas, and the Edwards Cinemas, which are near the outlets. Since their initial request to sell alcohol, Roxy Theaters has expressed that they are still interested in being able to sell alcoholic beverages. Representatives of the Roxy Theaters are here tonight. We have not received any feedback from the other theaters in Camarillo. So under the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, a conditional use permit will be required for theaters to sell alcohol. Each conditional use permit would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public hearing. Along with the conditional use permit application, the theater would be required to submit a security and operations plan that details how they would monitor alcohol purchases, staff training, and compliance with the local and state requirements. All conditional use permit applications would be routed to the Camarillo Police Department for their comment and to provide any recommended conditions of approval to be applied to the permit. Staff conducted research on other cities in the county and found that currently the cities of Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, Oxnard, and Ventura currently have provisions in their code to allow theaters to sell alcohol. Thousand Oaks has three theaters that sell alcohol, and they require a conditional use permit to be reviewed either by the Planning Commission or the Community Development Director, depending on the proximity to residential uses. And Simi Valley has two theaters that sell alcohol, and their code requires a conditional use permit to be approved by the Planning Commission. However, if it is a restaurant in a theater, it can be approved administratively. Oxnard does not have any theaters that sell alcohol, but it would require a conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission. Ventura has one theater that sells alcohol, and a conditional use permit is required. And depending on the hours of operation, it would be reviewed by either the Planning Commission or the Community Development Director. This proposed ordinance amendment requires that all the conditional use permits for alcohol sales in theaters would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is consistent with the city's general plan as it supports various commercial activities to support the residents of Camarillo and attract customers from surrounding areas. Additionally, under the proposed ordinance amendment, a conditional use permit is required, which would allow the city to ensure that the use is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff has consulted with the Camarillo Police Department, and they have indicated that they do not have any objections to this proposed ordinance amendment. This proposal is also consistent with the Economic Development Strategic Plan that the council adopted in 2018. Specifically, it aligns with the plan's priorities to enhance economic development. It will allow theaters to offer an experience that customers expect of a modern theater-going experience and to be able to stay competitive with other theaters in the region. This proposal has been reviewed and determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages in theaters subject to a conditional use permit reviewed by the Planning Commission in the Camarillo Commons Mixed Use, Professional Office, Camarillo Old Town, Commercial Plan Development, and Light Manufacturing Zones. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions? Mr. Kildee.
Okay, I have several questions. Okay, so this will be a CUP that'll go before the Planning Commission first, is that correct? So this is not allow this to all of the entities in question here? It's a case-by-case scenario on this, is that correct?
That's correct. If a theater, new or existing, wanted to sell alcohol, they would first have to submit a conditional use permit application. And then that would be scheduled to go to the Planning Commission for a public hearing for their review.
So it does not need any state approval, then? It does not have to go up to the-
If the Planning Commission approved the conditional use permit, then ABC Alcoholic Beverage Control would be the state agency that would be authorized to approve the license, issuing the license for the ABC permit to sell alcohol.
Okay, and then my understanding with some other theaters that it's not necessarily in every theater there's designated, you know, let's say there's 12 or 14 screens, that there's designated areas for this? Am I correct in that?
We would look at a case-by-case basis as some theaters may operate a little differently and have only certain theaters or one theater that may be designated to sell alcohol. And so through that conditional use permit, we would be able to apply specific conditions regarding where the alcohol can be consumed in looking at what other cities in the region typically apply conditions to these theaters. Certain conditions are that they do not allow people to consume alcohol outside those designated theaters, such as kind of like the lobby or the concessions area. But they can only be in those designated theaters. So there would be specific conditions to regulate and make sure that alcohol is being consumed properly and in the proper locations.
So would the criteria have to be developed? In other words, let's say there's a matinee, and let's say the matinee starts at 11 o'clock. I'm not in favor of having somebody be able to get a drink at 11 o'clock in the morning. I just want to throw that out right there. I understand, you know, the need from a business point of view and to make them relevant, I understand that. But there's also the family atmosphere, too, that we have to at least acknowledge to a certain extent that exists here. So the criteria, I think, has to be developed. A, their personnel have to be trained on how to card people- A, their personnel have to be, uh, trained on how to card people. B, what type of alcohol? Are we talking mixed drink? Are we talking beer and wine? What are we, what are we really talking about? Uh, C, are we talking about the whole, um, theater? Uh, B, the time that, um, when it would be permissible to do this. Um, and I'm just kind of going off the top of my head here, but those are some things that I think this, the, the criteria of this needs to be somewhat further defined as we go along with this. And I understand other cities have done that with very minimal impacts, but if I don't ask these questions now, then when am I going to have an opportunity to ask them? So that's why I kind of, I, I think it's important to at least get a little certain semblance of exactly what the, you know, criteria and, um, the operational aspect of this, if it does go forward.
So those are all very good questions, and we don't have all the answers at this time because our analysis will be dependent upon if a theater, number one, chooses to apply for a conditional use permit, and then what the aspects and particular, um, dimensions are associated with their request. So we're going to have to receive an application and analyze that application in order to condition it appropriately to make sure it's compatible with the items you've raised and the other adjoining businesses in our community. So we will be analyzing all of the points that you've raised, and we will also do analysis on how other communities have conditioned their theaters to ensure safety and compatibility. So we will definitely be looking at that and doing a deeper dive if we receive applications in the future. We know most likely we'll receive applications from the Roxy, but we haven't heard from Edwards or the other cinema.
I have one more follow-up, Your Honor, if I may. Providing we go forward this, providing the CUP does get approved, will it be on a year-to-year basis, or once a CUP is approved, is it approved? In other words, will be following up on whether or not the success of this is?
So in some circumstances with conditional use permits, we have placed conditions on the permit that we can revisit it any year or two years. Traditionally, a conditional use permit is a land use permit that runs with that property, and it's in effect so long as the business is operating consistent with those conditions of approval. Keep in mind that any conditional use permit can be appealed by members of the community. It can also be called for an order of review by the city council for your own analysis as a de novo hearing where you'd make the ultimate decision on a conditional use permit. And then they're also revocable if they don't meet their conditions, and we recognize that there may be a safety issue or an incompatibility that arises after a year of operation, we can bring it back to the Planning Commission for consideration of revocation.
The approval of the Planning Commission, does it go before the councilors? Do the Planning Commission have final say?
It would have final say unless it was appealed or the city council called for an order of review.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
However, the ABC will be enforcing laws that it usually, such as, uh, the ages of the people who are serving the alcohol, the identification system for age, and whether they're, uh, somebody's passing along.
Correct.
They do that kind of checking, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, I, I just wanted to add to that, that we have had conversations with ABC, and they do have like a, a package of special conditions that they apply on all their licenses for alcohol where it's being served in a theater. Um, so those would be applied in this particular case, and they are pretty restrictive in terms of, uh, the training, uh, where the alcohol can be served and how, um, uh, monitoring the patrons, uh, making sure staff is trained, uh, properly to serve and that sort of thing. Um, also, theaters also have their own plans in place, and in some cases, they're even more restrictive than, uh, maybe the city or the ABC requirements. So i- in those cases, uh, they are somewhat self-regulating, uh, but the city can also apply, um, additional conditions to those permits.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Uh, same rules apply for public, uh, public speakers, three minutes. First card I have is from Paul, I think it's Loro.
Kuro.
Kuro, I apologize, I'm not reading correctly tonight.
Uh, bad handwriting. But yeah, I'm Paul Kuro. I, um, I actually opened the Roxy Stadium 11 in 2005, so, uh, yeah, August 12th, 2005. So it's been 16 years. We're really trying to, you know, go another 16 years. Obviously, the last 13 months has been pretty devastating, um, especially to our industry. Um, as you saw in that slideshow, we originally did this in 2019, um, and, um, you, and that's mostly because of all the competition, especially up the grade. Many of our guests have said that the only reason they didn't watch a certain movie at our theater was because we didn't have those amenities, uh, the beer and wine, and they, they went up to the grade to do it. Um, and, you know, now, more than ever, um, we're going to need that to succeed and for the Mission Oaks Plaza in general to succeed. Um, they're, they're all very excited, we're back. They were, you know, down a lot when we, when we weren't open. Um, with the streaming services, a lot of people can just see, see a movie at home, um, and now sometimes even the same day, which is, um, yeah, uh, not great. So the more amenities we can offer, the better. Um, you know, I, I definitely can't answer a lot of the questions, being the general manager there, but I know we're only doing a, a two-drink maximum, so this is not a, like a, you know, a, a bar or brewery or anything, just two drinks, and, um, you know, everything will be strictly enforced. Um, yeah, but, um, we're very excited. Um, thank you for taking the time to look at this ordinance amendment.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had two, uh, non-speaker cards turned in, all of the council members have seen them, but is there anybody else who would like to speak to us on this issue? Seeing no one come for, oh, going once, going twice? Please state your name for the record.
My name's Scott Simpco. I'm the Food and Beverage Director for Santa Rosa Cinemas. I oversee all operations in concessions and in our bistros. Uh, that is what we call our beer and wine section. Uh, speaking on stricter self-regulatory, we have, as you probably, hopefully, have all gone to our theater, you know there's reserved seating. So we know where alcohol goes in every auditorium. We have a, a self-regulated system where we limit the alcohol sales to every customer. We create a list that we also follow up on where all alcohol sales go to. So the family atmosphere will still be able to be intact, and we check on for any sort of abuse or, uh, any sort of issue that will be above and beyond, like where, where the alcohol should be. So we, we, we have a self-regulating system that we check on pretty, pretty strictly. And I hope that is a somewhat of an ease.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else who wants to speak to us on this issue? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'll close the public hearing. And I'm going to request a reading of the title.
Yes, this is ordinance, um, 1182. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camrio, California, amending Camrio Municipal Code, chapter, it's 19.21, Camrio Commons Mixed Use Zone, 19.22, Professional Office Zone, 19.25, Camrio Old Town Zone, 19.26, Commercial Plan Development Zone, and 19.30, Light Manufacturing Zone, to allow for the on-sale of alcoholic beverages in theaters subject to a conditional use permit.
Is there discussion or introduction of the ordinance?
May I make a comment?
Mr. Kildee.
Um, yeah, I, as a fellow businessman, I'm very, um, uh, sensitive to what's happened to the theaters here, and I'll single out the Roxy because they're here tonight. Um, they run a very, very good, clean operation. I have no doubt that you'll continue. That's in your, your goals, uh, your business plan to do that. Um, I do think that we have to be sensitive to the family atmosphere there. I'm pleased to hear that you agree with that, too. Um, we do get several families going to the movie theaters. We do get several people going to the matinees, and I, uh, I just want to make sure that my comments were not to be misconstrued, that I'm against this, because I'm not. I just want it to be done right. I don't want us to have to revisit this, so I'll support this, but what I'm asking staff to do is to make sure when they list the criteria that you get enough input in this to take into considerations all sides, so this will be successful for everybody, and that should be, at least that's my goal, and my assumption is it's everybody else's goal here, too. Um, I understand that there's been other theaters that have done this somewhat, if not successfully, to remain competitive. I understand that situation here, but my thought is that I just want to make sure that we get, uh, not necessarily be right, but I want us to get it right, and I want us to be successful. There's, we don't have to revisit this on a year-to-year basis. So those are my comments.
Mr. Tremblay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number 1182, amending Camrio Municipal Code Chapters 19.21, Camrio Commons Mixed Use Zone, 19.22, Professional Office Zone, 19.25, Camrio Old Town Zone, 19.26, Commercial Planned Development Zone, and 19.30, Light Manufacturing Zone, to allow for the on-sale of alcoholic beverages within theaters, subject to the issuance of a CUP.
There a second?
I'll second.
There's motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. I believe that completes the business of all of the meetings that had been opened, and with that, I will adjourn the special meeting and also the regular meeting of the Camrio City Council.